All right, we're good.
Hello and welcome. I'd like to call a meeting to order for the school committee meeting of March 12th, 2024. If we could all please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, would you like to read the mission and vision?
Falmouth Public School Mission: Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. I would just like to make a little statement about the recording in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or a video of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. Please state your name and the purpose of recording. Additionally, all participants are reminded to mute their microphones when not speaking to minimize background noise and ensure clear recording. Is anyone making a recording? Okay, seeing none. I don't think we have anyone for student advisory.
Anna is actually on the MBL field trip.
Nice.
Since the school committee approved her, so she's selected.
Wonderful. Okay, so is there anyone here for public comment? Do you have any?
No hands.
I see nothing on the computer. No? All right, we're cruising. So I would just like to make a little statement about the book donation, the first item on the agenda from Friends of the Library. The Falmouth Public Library Support Group was unable to join us tonight. We would like to thank them for the donation of composting books at the K-4 elementary schools. And the amount is way under $500, so we do not need a vote. But I just wanted to give you a little background on the book donation. And we thank you, Friends of the Library. Next on the agenda, it shows a presentation from East Falmouth School Highlights. However, our kiddos aren't quite ready yet, so I was gonna maybe hope that I, oh, very good, Stella, step in, out of order. Thanks very much. Welcome back.
Thank you. Let's start with how about that girl's hockey team. So the winter season went really well. Obviously, our girls hockey team didn't stay finals this Sunday. With that, the winter season was like, what sports is all about? There were some teams that absolutely agonizing lost to end their season and other team in the state championship. So everything like that sports lessons life supposed to teach was this winter. From our track team, tons of personal bests finishing. I talked to coach today, highlight, she said it's the first time ever every girl at the league meet on our girls' team scored at least one point, which I don't know if you know track, but that's pretty impressive. Our boys finished third in the league, 22 kids coming back, only one senior graduating. So there's progress there. Every meet better, a little better, a little better. So growth, growth, perseverance, grit, all those things we saw. Our girls' basketball team, heartbreaking, goes all the way to Springfield International Charter School, is up 13 in the fourth quarter, loses by one on a three-pointer like with four seconds left. And so I used to coach them before, I coached them last year, so it was heartbreaking. I'm sitting at the scorer's table doing the scorebook, and the head coach is five feet away from me, we look at each other, and he's a math, he's retired math teacher from Lawrence, he looks at me, he goes, that was mathematically like impossible. And I was like, yeah, and we're just devastated. So the next morning I checked on him. I go, you okay? He goes, yeah, I'm okay. I go, because I sat in the back of the bus with the kids for two and a half hours, and we talked, and one of the girls wrote a poem about love. It was all the, every one of her teammates was in the poem like by name and all the things they did and how love of basketball, loving her teammates and this whole thing goes. After I read that, I was fine. He's like, that's what like sports lessons are all about. Boys hockey team starts two and six, ends up 12 and 10, goes in the state tournament, loses, scores, that's like, I think they had like 35 shots, the other team had like 15. We lose two to one. How was the co-coach is like, I couldn't have asked for anything more than these kids. These kids were amazing. They gave me everything they had all year. So those things were like abound. They had unbelievable. So there's this things called endowment games. So coach comes to me, it's like, we want to do an endowment game to benefit Tommy's Place. So you pay, pay a little fee and then you have it. So he's like, we're gonna donate the money, you know, it's Tommy's Place, our booster club's gonna run it, whole thing. Like, sounds like a great idea. Who are you gonna do it against? Barnstable. Like, what? We're gonna do, so I'm like, the biggest reservations I ever would have, like Falmouth Barnstable, like in a charity game, basically, like that sounds like a disaster to me. So he's like, I assure you, Todd, it'll be all right. We get there that night, he brings me in the Barnstable locker room, we talk to their players about what it's all about. Go in the Falmouth locker room, talk to their players what it's all about. Absolutely amazing night. They had the family that, the family that was staying at the Tommy's Place house that we come in. And I don't know if you know about Tommy's Place, kids battling cancer. They were at the brink in the game, they brought the kid on the ice, the family dropped the puck. It was like, what an unbelievable experience. So you have that giving back experience there. So you have that heartbreak of those couple of teams, you have that, you know, community building piece. And then obviously we have our girls going to state championship on Sunday. Absolutely amazing season. I mean, think we're, they're 23, two and one at this point. So just can't end who they lost to, two to nothing, like 4-3 in double overtime. So it's just been an amazing winter. So you see that that whole, the reason why we do sports, you can put kids in situations that, you know, have this major adversity, like the girls' basketball team, and then the coaches, you know, sit in the back with them for two hours, loving them, and they're loving each other, and that's just what it's all about, and that growth. Really busy week when I agreed to this a while ago, I didn't think we'd be in the state championship. So we have a rally on Thursday. At the end of the day, we have our activity period at the high school. Some cool stuff going on, you're all invited if you want to come by, it's at a little after 1:30. Where, you know, one of my goals was kind of to embrace the Falmouth Bold and the new Falmouth. We're actually bringing in some girl from the 2015 girls' state championship hockey team. So they're gonna be there to whoever's in the area. Miss Gange, you might remember, Kelly Ferrera is gonna be all wild, gonna do a little something for us. So we have a couple of game, like little fun activities. So that should be, that should be great. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Door, we have fan buses that we're working on tomorrow morning goes out. Mike Falcone's put it on all of our computer screens in the school. There's a message and then it flashes over and there's a QR code to go on the Google Doc to sign up for the fan bus. We're gonna release that to the kids first thing in the morning, gonna release it to the staff, and then Dr. Harris is gonna give a connected call tomorrow afternoon and release it to the families of those. So it should be, should be great. I mean, 1 o'clock in Boston on St. Patrick's. So, but the team's great. I was, I was gonna invite some of the girls, the hockey team, to come with me, take the pressure off me, but they're actually doing a cool, they, they have a hour on the ice tonight, and they invited all the youth hockey girls. So the whole entire youth, every girl that's involved in youth hockey is on the ice with them. So there's like more community outreach. One of our big things was communication. We talked, I've been working with Mr. Bushy about the communication between Lawrence and the high school. So because our boys hockey team played a couple of weeks ago, our spring, like meet the coaches night was postponed. So we piggybacked it off our winter awards night. So we're gonna try that on Thursday. So at 6 o'clock will be like meet your spring coach, and at 7 o'clock will be winter awards night. So I think the one stop shopping for parents, I've gotten some pretty good feedback on that so far. So if that goes well, we're gonna, on June 13th, we have our spring sports awards night, and we're gonna bring in, we're gonna advertise it big time at Lawrence and bring in the, all the kids fall for fall in June and try to get them all the information in June for August. Where last time we were kind of doing that meeting where it almost started, then we're going to have at that meeting in June, we'll give them information, and we'll just have like an open house night in August. If you missed anything, you can come in and just, the coaches will be like in the library one night, and they'll just come in and get information. If you didn't get it, so the big one will be in June, so we can kind of have a better idea on numbers and try and promote that. Like to thank Dr. Door and the Falmouth Road Race, we're starting up Lawrence football again. So building our Lawrence school program because to get some numbers, youth football in town's kind of died out. So I think to get those kids at Lawrence, and our coaches are talking about trying to revitalize kind of flag football, maybe at the Morse Pond level, that will lead into Lawrence tackle football, that will lead up hopefully up to the high school. We've had like an eighth grade waiver for some kids to come up, and it's just not really feasible, an eighth grader could be trying to play JVs against the older kid. It just doesn't feel right. So we're gonna try to have, there's a really pretty thriving middle school football league that runs from like, like Brockton, I think has four teams, the Vineyard, Nantucket, Mashpee. So there's a nice pool of teams to play. So I think we're, that's a good move for us to go. So that's starting, the, we're having a little soft opening of the tennis courts on Monday, the first day of tennis practice. So we'd like to thank the community for that also. Those, they look amazing. If you haven't been by there, the gray and the maroon is really sharp looking. So they practice at 2:30, so we'll just do a quick one. And then when all the landscaping and everything gets done, we'll have a bigger ceremony in the spring. So it's, it, like I said, the winter's been, it's been a great run this winter. You, you're playing the last game of the, that anybody can possibly play. I mean, it's just, it's what you dream of as a kid. And I think the whole, I remember being there when they were in 2015, when they won it. I remember being there in, when the boys' basketball team in 2010 was in the Eastern Mass Finals, and they, they won at the, they won at the Garden to go to the state finals, which is then in Worcester. So it's just really cool experience. So I think that our kids are lucky for the support of the, you know, school system, Dr. Door, and what we've had here. So there's our winter in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Can I just, thank you, Todd, for all that. That was great. To clarify the fan buses, so we're gonna have one for students and we're gonna have one for adults. So, so I just invite anyone here that would like to join the fan, the adult fan bus. So we'll make sure each gets the QR code and be able to sign up if you'd like.
Thanks. That's great.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the presentation of the, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
So we have one of our four here.
All right, we can move around.
Yeah, that's all right.
All right. Let's, let's move on to the first read of the school calendar.
That's pretty excellent.
Okay, so your school calendar is in the packet. Please forgive me while I find it. And again, this is just your first read. If you see any edits or
Okay, so as you notice that we actually will be starting school on September 2nd of 2025. That is earlier than so many years. So, and then the last day is the 17th of June. If there's a snow day, it will be the 25th because of June 19th holiday. So that's just one day on that. The holiday, if you look at December, it's actually a little bit longer this time. So we are out on the 24th, and we don't return until January 10th because of the weather. Everything else is pretty typical of all the calendars that we've presented.
Great.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So on my calendar, oh, is this highlighted because it's, so June, sorry, let me help, right? So June 24, 25, 24, 25, 26 are highlighted on mine?
If there's snow days.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
24, June.
I don't know why they're highlighted, because you should have the, the last day is the 25th.
Okay.
If there's snow day.
Right, right.
That's only because we have five snow days. I don't know why. Yeah, I don't know why that happened.
You can make a special copy. They should not be highlighted.
I didn't know if it meant something special.
Yeah, I know.
And then my other question was that, you know, I know that we usually try to have I guess if my question is why the early release days are, like we have one in May, which seems kind of late. It's like, but is there a reason that there's one in May but not April or January or November? Like, I know it's nice to have the early release days earlier in the year, so because that's the staff are actually trying to learn how to do stuff. So is the May 1 for end of the year stuff? Or I guess that's my question is, how do we pick which months to do early release? Because
Dr. Todd?
Sure. Yes, the May 1 is to wrap up end of year items, confirm the PD plan for the following year. Can't fill one in April because that's where the MPS testing window is. Aside from the high school having prescribed days, because everybody can work different days then. And then the one in January with the Apple is just K to 6, because that's the conferences. And we try to be careful about where the PD versus the conference scenario, so everybody has the same amount of PD time, how things get laid out.
Thanks.
All right. Mike?
Just a follow-up to Kelly's question. And is there a reason that the PD days differ by the weeks in the month? Like, instead of being the second Tuesday of the month, that's
Yeah, so I know when we had tried previously to have it done either the first or the second, what happened was, so in October, it would have put it either against the week that we have the Friday full day, or it would have been against the holiday. So that's how it gets pushed down a little bit more in the month. And then in January, it had been typically the first one, but they would have come back on the 5th, and that had happened on the 6th, so just trying to off, offset that a little bit. So sometimes it just depends on where some of the holidays or vacations fall and not trying to put everything, so it's choppy.
Good. Tuesday is the best day of the week.
Tuesday contractual day, 10 hours, yeah, contract day Tuesday.
Can I ask about the, the Friday, April 3rd?
Sure.
And just curious when, how, how we assess the need for that, that day off and when that was last reviewed?
I don't, I don't know when it's last, was last reviewed, it's not been reviewed since I've been here. But it has been traditionally just a recess day because of attendance of both adults and students.
It was two years before you came, if I remember right.
I was just gonna say, I know what you think. I need to tell you, it was, I've been discussed many years. Yes, and it was, we had spoke with staff and administration about having that day off. And there were so little staff and so little students who attended the year or two. Forgive me that, I don't remember exactly how many times they tried to do, to have class on that day, that they were having classes in the auditorium, they were having classes in the gymnasium. They just didn't have enough staff, they didn't have enough. So historically, demographically, it's heavy in the town.
Any other questions? Great. Right, maybe, I think, do we have time?
Yep.
Great. Moving on to the presentation of East Falmouth School Highlights. I just want to start and say we have Mrs. Anissa Graff. She's going to do our presentation. We had some other kids who were supposed to be here, but conflict, they couldn't come. So Gavin is our wonderful very proud of him. He came off the baseball field. He's representing in his uniform.
So Mrs. Kelly had asked me to present what we did for Black History Month. The fourth graders had done a collaborative piece where they each got a puzzle piece. It had a code number on it, and they had to do a color by numbers for it. And then they had to put it together. And I'd like Gavin to talk a little bit about the process and if, how you felt about coloring it, if it was easy, tedious, boring. You can be honest. How do you feel about doing it? It's kind of, because when you got it, do you see a picture? You just see like a couple of lines, right? They, they get to see the, the final product, what it's supposed to look like. But when they get the piece, it's just very abstract. And for some of them, some of the squares are a lot of coloring, and we had some tired hands. We had kids that just wanted to give up, and they were like, oh, this is so boring. But then when they put it together, it really, they, I think this is, I never got to see any of this. Mrs. Kelly heard lots of comments and saw lots of students stopping in front of it. And I was happy to find that out because it was hung in the hallway, and I never got to hear any of it. I only got to hear the grunts. Trying to put it together. And if, if you don't write your code on the back properly, you don't know which ends up. So it, it was a good cooperative learning piece for them. Do you remember which piece you were using, a little bit of pink and purple? So cool. And then his piece de resistance, resistances down there, if you want to walk over. We then took our Black History and rolled it into Women's History, and they learned about our iconic and fair and fair, started the day, started three colors of their choice. And then they created this art inspired by And why did you, why did you start all of 10 of like Did you just like change? Were you inspired by one of her work? Like you thought, you know, my college, you know, my friend? Would you do anything different? Or you're not? A little more color make it? So when you guys there's got pictures of them at work, and then second graders did other pictures of fireflies in history. Third grade made first outside of these bands, and first grade made work inspired by Zena.
Thank you so much for coming. Yeah, he gets to sign our golden book. You do something special, something kind, something hard, you get to sign our golden book. And he certainly gets to sign our golden book and get a sticker for being brave enough. We had about four other people who were supposed to come, life gets in the way, and they were nervous. But Gavin, we are so proud of you.
I have one question for Gavin. What's your favorite position in baseball? Pitcher?
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to the public hearing on school.
Yeah, we have
Oh, sorry.
Can we do something I'm really excited about? Can I talk about Master Chef?
Yes.
I thought it was gonna be a game when I read the title. But oh, we're doing something fun.
So I'm really excited about this position. So this is with the Master Chef within our food services. But let me, I'll get a little bit, start how we got to this point, and I am actually presenting this to you as a possible new position. With the free breakfast lunch program in our schools, we continue to be reimbursed from the federal level. And so the coffers grew, and we have kind of prioritized last year and this year on how to spend this funds, which the government's actually telling us we have to spend out. We can't keep the money there. So we installed the dishwashers at three of our elementary schools so that we can move forward with the composting. We were able to purchase the trays and flatware that will be used to help support the composting. The money is also supporting the, the fees for Black Earth to pick up the composting. So we were looking at the funds, what can we do different in Falmouth that would move us forward? We also spent the money to some repairs in one of the kitchens, which is allowable, one of the cafeterias. We are purchasing new cafeteria tables for the high school. They're kind of outdated. Many of the other schools have some newer. So we, as we're spending this now, we have to continue to think. And one of the allowable expenses is a chef. And so there, there's a couple of places in Massachusetts that has done this, but this is pretty popular across the country. And so the Master Chef would, would be a chef that's actually certified as a degree, would spend time looking at really creating scratch meals. So this is where, you know, the excitement and the passion comes in, that, that students would be able to and let me, I have to back up for a second, and I just told them the other day when we were talking about this, our food service workers are awesome, right? But there's not enough time in their day to create menus, right, and from scratch, right? And that's, that's a lot of extra work. So this would be someone that would actually help them. They actually are excited about this. So not only just scratch meals, but also looking at some cultural diversity in the meals so that we're exposing students to a lot of cultures and heritages in our schools. And then the other is to really source fresh produce local and possible looking into proteins that we might be able to add. But really getting as much fresh and local, creating scratch menus, and then trying to go to scale across seven schools of that. So there would be a lot of test items. I think it'll be fun for the students because the chef is creating something and test it out on the kids, right, and before we go full scale. So I think it'll be a lot of fun. I think we're gonna see some new and exciting meals on the menu. But I'm very excited about this. So this is the first read, and happy to answer any questions. And then I would ask for your support at the next school committee meeting, so we can get this posted and definitely have someone in the spring or summer to start developing, getting started for the next few.
Any questions, comments?
So my first question was whether or not our current staff was on board, because of course, were you gonna add something before I go?
No, I thought you had a different question I was going to answer and then I forgot to say, but go ahead.
I have a couple.
Okay.
So I'm glad for that, that they are on board with this. And I'm really a fan of the way that it is so inclusive in describing not just local food, but foods that are, that our students culturally will eat. And exposing kids to culture through food, which I'm a big, big, so anyway, so I love all those things. So I have two questions, one is about whether or not the farm, I guess it's technically not a farm, but the high school food program, food production program is going to be part of this planning to try and utilize the foods that they are continuing to grow into. Do you want me to answer that one?
Yes, I, I absolutely love it because we, we're already starting that. So even out of the first greenhouse, they're, what I, my understanding are the most beautiful radishes ever. Right, and so they, they're already going, working in the kitchen with some of the produce. We are in the process with our food justice program of raising money, funding for a second. So we're already ready for a second greenhouse and that, so yes, absolutely. And they're, they're partnering and working not only with the, the food service, but I will add now that we're talking about it, but also with the culinary.
Okay, that was my next question. Whether it works with culinary, and then my last question is about, so, so the funding for this position with them becoming, because my understanding was that food service is supposed to be, like, we're supposed to be self-sustaining. So the idea is that the funding for this position would be coming solely, not out of our operational budget, but solely out of the funding that's.
Yes.
Okay, so then what happens if that goes away? If, if, is it guaranteed that free breakfast and lunch is going to continue and we'll be able to support this?
One, I would, I'm very confident for next year, I would be surprised if it will not continue. But if it didn't, if we look at this as, you know, everyone, if they, if you look at you, you go into a job and you're building capacity that you may not any longer be needed, right? So the way I look at it, if we're developing menus, we're testing the menus, we're, we're getting that local produce, we're sourcing and we're, you know, changing the culture over the next two years. And my guess is the funding that we actually have right now that we have to spend will probably go more than two years. Knowing that next year is, you know, we're going to have the free.
We know.
Yeah, so I guess my, my point, like, at least for the next several years, we would have that position. If we get to a point where we can't, like I said, hopefully we built a culture and it made that change that would be sustainable.
So it's not like a unique position it's going to be?
It is not.
Related to that, will our Master Chef have any additional budget for sourcing or experimenting? If that's, you know, testing recipes and that sort of thing that might be outside of the actual production of breakfast and lunches for students?
Yes, absolutely, and that will all come out of the budget for the food services.
Terry, have we considered offering our present chefs, sous chefs now, the opportunity to advance this position? Do we, is it, look, I mean, it could have been internal.
It could be, absolutely. If, if they have, if they have the criteria.
Okay, well, okay.
Couple of questions, what is the salary range that you're thinking?
So the reason I left that, that's a very good question, thank you, and I left it open. When we were looking at the, some other districts that are actually having this position, it's a, it's like a thirty to forty hour week. It's ten months, so the salary range was like sixty-five to eighty-five. So I guess the reason I left it open is if we can get a full-time person in, someone that wants to come in at twelve months, your thirty-seven and a half hour week, right, the typical, then the salary would be above that. If we're talking ten months and less than the forty hours a week. You know, it could be somebody that may be working already in a restaurant in the summertime and maybe doing weekends or some evenings through the, the year, that may also want this position. And so the hours would be less so than the compensation would, would match. But those are the ranges that, that are found from other districts.
So bottom of the shorter time range to top of the twelve month range, what are we talking?
Sixty-five to ninety.
Sixty-five to ninety. And then the other question I have is, is it possible that if we use that sixty-five to ninety K? Has, has been considered as, anybody looked into, like, would that sixty-five to ninety K possibly be able to use to, like, make sure the kids are getting higher quality?
So that is something that we're already looking at anyway with our, our food service director Andrea Burns, so they're, they're closely together. But we're also looking at portion sizes, that's one of the conversations we're having.
Yeah, I guess I, my question is, has anybody talked to the current food staff and said, if you had sixty-five to ninety K, could you make the portion sizes bigger or better, what could you do with this?
We can certainly have a conversation, but it's not an either or, we have, we have money. I don't know what the, I mean, the last time of that was, you know, we worked up a million dollars right now that we have to spend.
So we, we can do both and the effort is to do both.
Yeah.
So with a professional chef coming on board, you have the ability to upgrade the menu and follow the food, et cetera. But you definitely have a budget to do both.
So, so I guess I bring to me my third question, but follow up is how is it that we have so much left over if it's what we're bringing in is supposed to be going to the kids? How is that we have a certain plus that we can?
Because the state is providing free breakfast and lunch, right? So the money's coming in from the state and we still get reimbursed at the same level we did previously for the number of students that are eating, so our participation is up. So the more we feed, the more money comes in from the federal government. So we're getting, we're getting reimbursed at the same rate and so that's why the, the, the the money is sitting there, it's growing and the options we have on how to spend that money. That's what, they're, they're asking us to, to find ways to spend down the money. Because, because you can't leave it sit there, right? It's got to go back to the students and we, we think that this is the best way of, you know, doing right by the students, right? Because.
Well, and, and that's kind of what I'm getting, is if I have a hundred dollars budget to go out to dinner and I choose to go to McDonald's, I'm only going to spend, well nowadays thirty bucks, but I'm, I'm not going to spend nearly as much as that hundred dollars and I'm going to have a whole lot left over versus if I go to a nicer restaurant.
We are not cutting.
My, my question is, is if, if we are, if we are getting more money in than we're spending, is it possible that that can be spent on more or higher quality food that we're not?
That's the whole purpose of having the chef, is so that we will be adding higher quality food. Right now, we're sourcing most of our food that are, that's pre-made through a vendor. That's what we want to ship and put the money into the food. But we can't expect our current workers to be able to create menus and fix the menus, you know, by scratch, right? We, we need help to, to doing that, so that's the idea. So that's our end goal, our end goal is that we have more help. We are increasing, we have the advertisements out across everywhere, that we are increasing the number of workers that we have in food service so that they have more help, not only to whatever the chef comes up with, right? Is it, we're going to have more help creating meals because it's going to take more time possibly to do from scratch. You know, so anyway, so we're trying to think of all those angles, but we're not holding back on the money. The money's coming in and, and we're trying to figure out how to do something better for our students.
And so Dr. Doris from earlier as well has said, we've been investing in the equipment too, which is the critical component of it too. So that, that's been more recent, so we're, we're accelerating the spend down of that balance through food, through personnel, through equipment, et cetera, whether it be kitchen equipment on the tables, et cetera, which, which are expensive. So it's all of those components combined.
Yeah, so just want to piggyback on something Kelly said, which is interacting with our students in culinary. And I'll actually see that written into the job description and whether that's, our kids get to be the ones to test making some of the menu, menus or something like that, but I, I think it would be great to find ways for this person to be interacting with our, our students in culinary who we met and got to taste some of their amazing food recently. And then the other is just kind of, an idea that had occurred to me on reading this, but thinking about the concern about could, you know, would this be permanent? Could we ever hit a, a point where we wouldn't be able to fund it and maybe just something to consider, like, I wonder, I'm also curious what we'll see in terms of interest in this, in this job. And wonder about the idea of making it like a one or two-year residency, essentially, right? Not necessarily looking for somebody who's like, hey, I want to do this job forever, but, but creating a position that's intended to have different chefs with different strengths, different approaches, kind of cycling through and introducing their different skill set and approaches to food to, to our students and our staff.
Hey Terry.
I'm, I'm not good at economics, I admit, but it seems to me the government is now paying us twice for being in free and reduced lunch. They're paying us for giving us the food and they're paying us for using the food, what did I miss?
This, our state is providing the free breakfast and lunch meal program. And the federal government is still reimbursing us per meal and yes, when you look at it that way, I mean, it is what it is.
We're getting paid by two government agencies, the state and the federal. And sooner or later, one or the other is going to say, I'm not going to do it anymore if the state's doing it or vice versa. So I kind of like Heather's suggestion of making it like a residency rather than something permanent. And I also, I'm going to go back and say, I wish we, I bet some of our people who work there now would like to do scratch cooking and maybe they don't have quite all the experience, but they could get it, put a plug in for them again.
You know, just to reemphasize, we have a balance now roughly a million dollars. And, you know, that's after we started spending it down for equipment and so on. So this is a great opportunity to, to make that investment in the external and I think, you know, we'll be able to carry us through any, any changes that occur, that's drastic in many of this, the school program, I, I don't see that coming in the future at all. But so my point is that I think we're in a good position to make this investment now. It'd be rough for two to three years.
How long do we have to spend down the money?
Well, they just want to see after spending it, that's what they're asking us, that we're not, it's not sitting there.
We're not supposed to be building a balance there.
Okay, go ahead Mike, sorry.
Just one question, would this person be charged with kitchen staff or independent, how would that work?
Andrea Burns, who is our food service director, is still the director of the program. This is the person that's coming in and it's, it's just that, it's the chef. And would be working closely with Andrea, they'll, they'll work on, you know, meal prep, I mean, meal planning together. But the chef would really be testing out menus and bringing in the ideas and, and then working with the, the kitchen staff on, on that side of it. You know, like one of the ideas that, you know, so, you know, we want to crush banana bread for breakfast, right? The chef actually might bake all the bread and then send out to other schools. And just, just like something that they could do in addition that actually helps out the staff that has, you know, so I, I don't know what it'll be. I don't know what the specialty is going to be or who's going to apply, I think that's what, you know, this is an exploration thing right now to find out who, who's coming in.
There's another thing you just said about shipping law to school, I know this, you can quite not know this yet, but would they be centered in the high school?
Not necessarily, no, I mean, the chef could work out of any of the schools and I hope that they're creating menus and they're doing taste testing, right? They're going to be at each of our schools and trying menus out and see what the kids like and don't like and getting them to try these things. I mean, that's some of it too, right? It's the fun of getting, you know, getting out and just sharing, you know, some food tasting, right? That, that they might not have had and they're going to give opinions whether they like it or not, might make it the menu, it might not. So I think that's, that, that'll be some of the fun in this whole process.
And given the, given the volume of deals that the current staff is putting out, it would be difficult for them to take on a role such as this, this really, it has to be a new role and the organization would consider, their focus is really on delivery, that a, literally hundreds of meals. You know, it's four hundred meals, Ben and the school, so this, this is a critical personnel addition to the organization.
Yes, Susan, do we offer anything during the summer time for like the extended school year kids in terms of being at the event breakfast or something like that?
No, that's okay, I'm just putting myself back into it. That is fine.
I don't know that we do.
Do not believe that we do.
What? I don't know that we do because of the hours, right? I mean, they're definitely done before noon, so I know we don't do lunch, I don't think we do, do we do a snack? We, I don't know if we do a snack.
I think the potential here sounds great, I mean, who wouldn't want, and some excellent suggestions along the way. I mean, who wouldn't want to have the chefs, have a chef for the district kind of thing? And, you know, utilizing our gardens and our local resources while getting, you know, by, you know, maybe I'm a month at East Fama, maybe I'm a month at the high school, whatever it is, I really, I think the potential here really is exciting and I mean, I'm excited for this, we don't have a lot of COVID positives, believe me, but I feel like this potentially, you know, Terry kind of said, the double, double, I don't want to call it double dipping, I'm not, I'm going to call it that, though, the double dipping on the state and the federal level dollars. Why not do what we can to try to help our district as well as making sure our summer kids are being fed?
And doing it quickly enough that we go, we scoop up the people before every other district figures out the issue.
Right.
Because they've, it's not like we're the only ones, all this, all the districts must be in the same spot, they're all.
It's listed as an idea, although, you know, options of what you can do with your mind.
That's right.
Let's get the good view.
So we are within one minute of the public hearing on the school choice and I think it's safe that we move right on to that. So public hearing on school choice. I would love, I motioned in a second to open the school choice public hearing. So is there a motion on the table to open? Thank you, Mike, is there a second? Thank you, Margaret. And we need to vote to open, oh no, I guess that's right, no, that's right. Okay, so then vote to open the discussion for school choice and we're all here. So all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on the subject of school choice? None. Seeing none, okay, do we have any discussion or presentations by the school committee, the superintendent on school choice?
All right, so in your packet, it was my recommendation on school choice. Of course, the kindergarten is determined based on the school enrollment and we don't know that yet. So we don't actually commit to seats, we, I have recommended four seats at every grade and we do not accept students in at twelfth grade. I provided some information for you that, that you usually have for each year, so it's, it's here for you. It's the number of school choice students for the last five years. Uh, it's the number of school choice students, uh, for the last, um, five years. And at this time, I, I just wanna say, uh, we, we have a hundred and sixty-six return applications. Of our current students that are returning next year. Um, we have, uh, seven, um, seniors that are school, um, choice students that will be seniors next year, that graduate. And then, um, uh, you often request information about, um, our students that. Are attending elsewhere. So you can see, uh, by year. The, um, reasons that kids may go other places. We have not, uh, in the recent past had more than, uh, four, four students in any grade. Uh, and with the keeping of trying to keep class sizes low, um, that is why I'm, I'm just recommending that we keep it before, before seat. The timeline, uh, is presented. Uh, we, uh, after you approve, uh, then we will. Do the advertisement for school choice, we'll start taking applications. Uh, we have not needed to do a lottery, uh, in the past, but if we need to do a lottery, the date would be May thirteenth. Uh, and then we would identify parents by May twentieth.
Good question. Oh, go ahead, Helen.
Sorry, trying to do some math and, and figure out what I'm looking at here. So the, the recommendation is for new seats?
New seats.
That's, okay. So then we would expect somewhere in this hundred and thirty-ish range, return of the plus. Up to forty-four.
We have a hundred and sixty-six returned.
Oh, hundred. Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, a hundred and sixty-six, all students in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, of course, sorry, eligible to, to return plus forty-four new seats.
As you can see, the hundred and sixty-six, that's not much meant, uh, matched the hundred and sixty-four. What happens during the school year if the, uh, a student, uh, family moves, but they wanna stay in Falmouth? Uh, we always allow their families to stay and of course, they're responsible for transportation, but if they wanna be here, we'll keep them. So that's why that number can go up during the year.
I have a question. Um, if a born family wants to have their elementary school child. Specifically at, um, a specific elementary school and that elementary school is. Full, like their, um, their numbers are on the high side. Does that born family understand that they, they don't get to choose which elementary school, but we will do our best? Based on their, if it's like, if the parent works at Born or they work, excuse me, if they work at. Their preferred elementary or it's convenient for their family kind of thing?
Yes, absolutely. So they, so with kindergarten, um, and again, I just, uh, to reiterate that we, um. We, we, we usually have more than four. Like this year, we had twelve kindergarten students that are school choice and we usually have more at that age level. Um, but we always say that we're accepting you in, we just, you may not know until August where your, which school it will be. We try to accommodate your first choice, but, you know, it's where the room is.
Okay, yes, uh, do siblings have?
Absolutely. All siblings are, um, accepted in. Uh, as well as, um, we have several, um, staff members that, um, actually travel quite a distance. Um, and, um, staff members' kids are, and we've, we've accepted. And again, even with that, we've really, we've never gone over those four seats above kindergarten.
Yeah, just, I know this has come up lately, so I wanna make sure that I asked the question. Do we have the ability to do any kind of screening or questioning as to? Why, uh, a family might wanna have their kid come to Valmont schools?
It's not within the, the law that we can ask any questions and there's, there, we're not allowed to have any of those kind of questions on the application.
So, so that's the only way, let's say someone is. Been from school to school to school, expelled here and there, uh, wants to come into Valmont. The only way for us to keep that. Coming into Valmont would just be to not allow school choice at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. But once, though, uh, the only caveat there, and I don't know if you wanna speak to it, if a student comes in and then we receive records. Um, I mean, we can then follow the law if there would happen to be, or we believe there could be a potential, um, disruption to the school. Would be the only consideration at that point.
But that would only be if someone was willing to share those records. We can't.
No, no, we, we do get the records. We just don't get the records until after they're accepted.
And when you say follow the law, is that, um, is it within the law for us to look at the record and say? This student would be a disruption to Falmouth. I'm sorry, we cannot.
Only with, it's only within the felony. The standard is if the student's continued presence in school would cause a substantial detrimental effect to the general welfare of the school. So sometimes based on the nature of the felony, you could make that determination, even if the student hasn't stepped through your doors. So I'll give an example. Um, we have a preschool at the high school. We have a student coming in with a felony about molesting young children. We could say, we have a preschool at the high school, the nature of the felony in and of itself, we're, we're concerned. And we can predict that there might be a disruption. That's tenuous, but I would certainly, I would argue that. Um, if a student came in with a felony and we really didn't have any reason to think. There would be a disruption, but they caused serious discipline problems, then you say the student's continued presence is a disruption at the school and we too can suspend the student.
So I still don't think I'm there, sorry. If we accept, um. Joe Schmo in from Mashpee. And they have a felony charge because of, per the statute, the felony is the only thing that you can, okay? And it's August and we don't receive those records until August. Are we, even though we've accepted that student in, are we then? Is it in our right to turn around and say, you know, we've actually received your records and looks like. We're utilizing this law.
It would depend on the case and the nature of the felony.
But you, okay, okay.
But it is.
Okay, thank you.
But just, just to clarify, if they had a, a number of misdemeanor. Fraud assault charges, something along those lines, that just weren't risen to the level of a felony. We would have to keep them in the district.
Yes, and I can tell you in all my years, at least as a principal at the high school, we never had a student come in with criminal charges. Uh, certainly not a felony. Um, and just to clarify, even if the student had a pending felony. And we decided we were going to exclude that student under the law, we've accepted them as school choice unless they determine, they decide to. Go to some other district, we still actually owe them education. So we still have to provide tutoring or online schools. So we are still responsible for that student.
So even if Falmouth decides you're not coming into a, uh, one of our buildings proper. And you live in another town, we're on the hook for the education. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I do wanna say that we do have a wonderful school choice, um, program. We do not have, um, you know, we don't have issues with our, our school. Like, it's not targeted to our school, school choice students, right? And only in two cases, since I have been here in six years, have we had a situation of a student that's a school choice student. That there ended up being an issue of us having to deal with. So out of, you know, a hundred and sixty students, right, that we have, we, you know. Th- those issues just don't come up, right? So the, the numbers really support us to continue. And I, I do recommend that we continue this school choice program.
Yes, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no, I know. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to publicly say that I am in support of this program.
And I would reiterate for as long as I've been here too. And Sue, you must, we, we've had a wonderful experience with school choice.
It looks like we have a hand up in the public comment or public, yes, question. Can we please promote Christina Woods?
Her son was Gavin.
Yes, that was her son Gavin, sweet Gavin, yeah. Christina, if you could unmute yourself, we would love to hear what you have to say.
Uh, she just lowered her head. Maybe she did by accident.
Oh, maybe it was an accident. Okay, no problem.
If she was high-fiving Gavin.
Maybe she meant a thumbs up for a school choice.
Alright, any other comments, questions? I would love to close the meeting on this school choice, the public hearing. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Margaret. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Great, moving on to. First read on policies.
Mary Gillis.
So the first policy, we, uh, Mass, the Mass Association School Committees, these are two of their updated policies. This is a policy about funding proposals, but the key is, um, no district was really in compliance with the actual law. And the law hasn't changed. It just came to everybody's attention that the law needs to be complied with. But under the law, under the statute of Massachusetts, all grants and gifts to the district for educational purposes only. Must be reviewed and approved by the school committee before expenditure. So, um, this policy, the goal is really to encourage the, you know, the administration to seek out funding and all of that. But we had to, the language that Mass recommended and, um, we actually went further to make it very clear that it's for educational purposes. And the distinction there is critical because we get gifts. Uh, most grants are for educational purposes. I mean, that's the purpose of getting a grant, but in terms of gifts. We could get gifts, for example, a community member wants to give gift cards to hand out to families or students. That's not an educational purpose. So that would not be a gift that would come before the school committee for approval. But any gift that is for an educational purpose would come before the school committee. Similarly, the next policy, uh, that makes that very clear, that gifts for educational purposes. Uh, must come before the school committee and we had to delete the gifts exceeding five hundred dollars because that wasn't accurate. And that isn't in compliance with the law. So the policy subcommittee, we've run over this numerous times, we've made the language. In compliance with the law and these are our recommendations.
Any questions that we could help with? Need a minute?
Uh, I just wanna thank Mary for really.
Yes.
Being really persistent with this because when we started, we were like, this makes no sense.
Yeah.
And no other district had an example because nobody was doing it, right? And I just really appreciate your tenacity in this.
And all the schools she called are scrambling now.
Yeah, I would say, so this now means like, all the grants that teachers across the district are getting for, yeah, X, Y, and Z field trip. At every elementary school, all the FEF grants, that's all coming to school committee now.
Yes, but so one thing that we thought about was, for example, at the beginning of the school year. Have the school committee vote that any FEF grant is approved because why would you not, why would you not approve an FEF grant? It has to, you know what I mean? I mean, there's really.
It has its own review.
Yeah, it has its own, I mean, FEF doesn't even, won't even approve the grant unless it meets strict standards. So instead of having every single, you know, to, to appreciate or accommodate the timeline that teachers are under. Especially in those small, like teacher opportunity grants.
Yeah, the mini grant.
It, it gets turned around fast. It would be impossible for them to wait for every, the next school committee meeting to have that approved. And we had, we had exempted FEF grants previously because of that very reason. But now that we know all grants have to be approved, it makes sense to just have a blanket approval for FEF grants.
I guess I would have. A similar concern with other, maybe the turnaround time is enough, um, but other grants that. Like from a PTO perspective, that I've seen teachers bringing in for field trips where. I'm saying, teachers would come to the PTO and say, okay, we need this much money. We've gotten a grant for this much to go on this field trip, right? And they're putting together a lot of different funding sources to do a field trip. I'm not opposed to seeing all of them and probably be really fun to see all the cool things that we have grants for, but, um, but yeah, just a little bit. I, I know we don't necessarily have a lot of wiggle room, but just trying to think through.
Yeah, the PTO, um, is a completely separate from the school committee and, and this policy. So they, they do not come to the school committee. It would not be a part of this.
As your partner on PTO, I asked that very question. Don't, I did my job. Don't worry. The box was checked.
Well, and I do say, I see that it does say before expenditure used, so they don't.
Exactly.
To apply for.
Right, right.
There's the whole, why would I apply for it if I don't?
That's right.
They have the faith in the.
Yes.
Committee to go ahead and do that.
Exactly. No, that's a very good point, Bill. It is before expenditure.
Great, wanna go on to KCD?
That was, I, I already wanted, I mentioned both.
Perfect, alright, moving on. Second read and act on policy, IMH therapy and comfort dogs in school.
So, but this policy has been before you once before. We took the feedback, um, Susan in particular mentioned. Uh, issues about leashes, which I looked into and she was correct, so we, we addressed language in that regard. And also in looking a little further into it with the policy subcommittee, we were calling them therapy dogs, but we realized that there's a certain, certain. Certain certification for therapy dogs, but another certification for comfort dogs. They both qualify to come into schools, nursing homes, libraries, whatever. But, so we added comfort dogs in here so that we would be all inclusive and not excluding groups that we already were even having in our schools.
Great, is there a motion to? I'm sorry, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Wonderful, thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Act on the Carousel of Light license. Lori, is there anything more you wanna?
I do, thank you. Um, we did a couple, um. Edits on your, and we, we did make sure that, uh, it went from January one of twenty-four through December thirty-fourth, twenty-sixth. To include three summers, because we're allowed to have up to three summers. And then, um, we added in, uh, at Melissa's request, the design which shall be approved by the school committee. Part installation, that's a part of H, that's part of, through the, um, the fall, winter, um, some kind of temporary. Uh, cover for the carousel that could be removed for, um, maybe the weekend in December. The, you know, the, the different, different activities during the year, but we will bring the, the design to you, um, for approval.
Is there a motion to act on the Carousel of Light? Mike.
You, you, Margaret.
Is there a second? Thank you, Margaret.
A defeated second.
Sorry, Margaret. Roll call, or sorry, no, I'm just kidding. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Wonderful. I think that the carousel, Jim, if you wanna, I saw you come in. Hi, come on up front.
I didn't realize it was any spellment, so I can't even. So, yeah, thank you for your approval. Um, I can promise you that, um, we'll, we'll do right by you. And, uh, make sure that, uh, the school committee is, is engaged and communicated with. Um, as you would expect, uh, as we've done in the past. Just a little side note, I wanted to bring it up because it touched us all so much. I got an email the other day through the carousel website and, uh, a woman, Jennifer S. It's her, uh, last initial. She just simply asked, when is the carousel opening? So I responded, well, you know. If, if her goes well, the school committee, of course. if, if her goes, well, the school committee, of course, it'll be open Memorial Day through Labor Day, as it has for the last 10 years. She wrote back and said that she was happy to hear that because every single day, her daughter wakes up and says, when can we go to Valmont and when can we go to the carousel? Isn't that amazing?
That's great, yes.
So it just shows how, you know, it adds so much to the culture of our town, but also the economic benefits of our town, businesses. So thank you for your approval. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Jim, for coming. Moving on to the acting on the naming of the Falmouth High School tennis courts. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
These two are sleeping, so.
All right, Terry, with the motion, is there a second? Thank you. Sorry, I tried. Is there any discussion on the acting of the naming of the Falmouth High School tennis courts? Terry.
I was thinking, I, I said at the last meeting, that I'm not sure the school committee should be the decision-maker on the naming of it. And I believe we put an ad in the paper.
We did.
But, to try to get public info, but we didn't. Not everybody reads paper. They may have missed it. I mean, I, I missed it, but I think it would be great if we heard from the Falmouth Athletics Hall of Fame. I know Stephen Kopoka is the president of that organization, and he's the one who put forth, but if he could say, we told the group, and this is who they recommend, it would be a group of people who've really known the athletic community in Falmouth for years.
Well, gee, that's a great point. Stephen has sent multiple emails to the school committee advocating for Jack Reardon to be named on the tennis court. So I think he, I mean, it appears as though, I, I'm reading it through the lines of he's representing the Athletic Hall of Fame. I'm reading it through that lens, and it looks like he has their approval. I don't know, I mean, he didn't sign it. He signed the email, Stephen Kopoka, he didn't sign it. President of the Athletic Hall of Fame. I don't know if it would make a difference. I'm not really sure. He also spoke to some of the comments that were made at our last meeting or our last discussion surrounding this, that it was the trend to not name things. He actually called out a number of scientific institutions and other facilities that have named things. So I'm just putting all that out there. We also received another email in support of, of which I forwarded to everyone. If you had a chance to read it, that would be great. Just to see if there's any more.
Great.
Um, yeah, yes, thank you. Yes, great. Discussion. Questions, others?
Yeah, I guess. Well, so I, I do read the paper, but I totally missed that there was an ad in the paper. I guess I still, I understand that's a proactive step to try to, to get some input, but I guess I just still feel like, if we're going to be naming our facilities, I would like there to be an actual, a decision to name it and a proactive process for soliciting input and considering options, rather than responding to a petition in order to
Well, it's in the school, like, it's in our, like, we can do it. And I heard you the last time, and that's why I suggested that we put the ad in the paper.
So I, I share that, that comment from Heather about having, if there's going, I think I made clear at the last meeting that I'm not in favor of getting in the habit of naming things. I know we've done it in the past, but it's just not something that I'm comfortable with. And if we are going to do it, I think at the very minimum, it should be, there should be more of a process than, than someone sends us an email and it starts something, we put an ad in the paper. I feel like we could be more thoughtful about it in a variety of ways. So, I, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't support this. It has nothing to do with him at all. It's just that I'm not comfortable with the process or, or the practice, period.
Okay.
So.
I think, just to kind of, on the other side of that, we have a lot of things on our grounds with Falmouth Road Race on them. And I am super grateful to the Road Race, and they offered their time, and they are very generous with their funding. And we have no problem putting their name on something that they've donated without naming names, people on the committee who have been on the tennis team at the high school. Who are, not, not even just tennis, but thinking of the named fields, tracks, entities that are named for people who have made an impact on those sports, academics, whatever. You could kind of, it's okay to have the Road Race, but not okay to have somebody that, you know, gave 50 years to Falmouth Public Schools? I don't know. And that's just an example of this, just putting it out there as an example. Margaret.
Well, if we have names of Road Races, because they financed what they gave.
I understand.
So I think it's a very different thing. I, I don't know this person, so I have no, nothing about this person. But I tend to agree that I think if there's going to be naming, and what they've done, we have no control of it. But there's going to be naming. I think it will always be an open process. And I also did not realize, I read the newspaper, I didn't see the ad, and I, and and I really think that if we're going to start naming, I have heard some concerns about previous names, by the way. And it's local garbage, so I don't want to bring that up, but I, I have heard tons of concerns. So I think that if we are going to do this, it really should be an open process. I think Terry's suggestion about is this coming from the club or it's coming from the individual is really an important issue. And, and an open process in terms of, if you're going to name something, once you do that, it's hard to do it. I think that we really need to think about it more thoughtfully. I was surprised that we're going to act on it today.
Okay. Any other comments?
I got one.
Please.
Um, so I went to Falmouth Public Schools my whole life, and I went to a gym that was once called the Gym, but now it's called the Dr. Robert Anthony G. Gym, because of all the work he did for the school and God's Holy Field. We, we've named a lot of stuff. I mean, there's a rock outside of Town Hall, which is different, but still, we've named a lot of things in town. I didn't know Mr. Reardon. He was at school when I was there. I didn't play tennis. I didn't know him, but I do know the people who've spoken on his behalf. And I think it means a lot to the community as a whole to kind of see the people who might not have donated money, but donated their time to all these kids for these years. So, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, keeping the Falmouth community to recognize those who did volunteer and do stuff. And maybe one day, and they feel that interest, you know, but that's my two cents there.
Yeah.
Kind of along the same lines of what Mike said, you know, I, my, my very first job was working at the local ice arena, and my very first boss was the one who talked me about work ethic and hard work and doing the dirty jobs, long, fun jobs, everything else. I was just talking to my kid about him two days ago, and that is, that, that's now, that ring is now native. He worked for the city for 30-some years. You know, I, I, I think that when someone gives their money, that's one thing, but it's a lot more difficult to give your time and your life and your career to something. And when you do that and you invest in our kids in our community for so many years. Again, I, I don't, I don't know this, this person, but from what I'm understanding is, it wasn't some random person. They were actually the tennis coach that would have been coaching kids on those tennis courts. And, you know, I, I don't, everywhere I've gone, every field, it's, it's named after somebody. Most of the time, when I see the high schools, it's, it's people who have given their lives, their careers, afforded them to students, not a check. Their heart and soul. And so I'm, I'm not opposed at all of naming something in our community after somebody who has done, who has poured their heart and soul to our students, because they're the ones that were supposed to be here.
She also mentioned he was the athletic director for decades.
And I, and I think of someone who gave an outstanding report just a little bit ago, you know, of course, Lomcataal Bear has been in our district for, what, like, 30 years now? You know, that, that someday, you know, I'm not saying everything's not necessarily God breaks. You know, someday, we, you know, there, there might be a school committee sitting here, you know, 10, 15, 20, 25 years from now, saying, you know, what about this? I don't, I don't see where it's a problem to, to do that as a committee.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for Jack Reardon, you know, but I just, I would just like to say we voted having some more community input. I mean, I just think this is going to be here forever, the naming, I think so. We could say, come back to us in two weeks with input. We give a timeframe, maybe we'll get the input, whether then it's open-ended, but that's all. Just involve me in the community more.
How much more? Just curiosity. How much more? We put it in the paper, and we've talked about it in an open meeting a couple of times. How, I'm
I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe flyers to the family, or just, you know, I'm trying to, they're trying to think, I'm sorry. I've just been trying to think in terms of, you know, like, I have no problem with naming, naming it after a person or, or it be Jack Reardon, just to know that the whole community is behind it, I think, speaking to Heather and Kelly's concern. You know, in terms of, you know, who has access to the school committee, who's able to be able reach out, yeah, no, I, I know. But just, I don't know, just to know, and think of it more as a process for future times when it might be made, like, to have a process that, okay, well, this is what we're going to do, and seek community input. And, you know, that's kind of just my, my kind of thought on it.
Mike.
I, I don't know the answer to this question, so ask me, Melissa, because anyone else in the past year and a half so reached out about the naming of the tennis courts?
No.
So, I'm also on the rec committee. We have a gentleman who comes in all the time to talk about naming something after his father was, for years, and they come in, they come in, and I got the same understanding from, from Mr. Reardon that these people keep on emailing us. We've got no other responses. We've been talking about this now at a past meeting. I didn't know it was paper, but it's in the paper. I don't see, like, the people who reached out to us are being proactive, and we've got no other responses. So I don't see the need for an open process, because we want to do it finally, but we're doing this now for, been on this for a while, so.
No matter what we decide this evening, I think going forward, we need to refer to the policy subcommittee for further discussion in that regard. There's been many naming over the years. Do we even know what things are named for? I mean, we, we lost the Marshall Gymnasium out at the front of Lawrenceville. We lost the Memorial Auditorium out the front. We just, the physical aspect of, you know, newcomers to our town do not know that those names are attached to those portions of buildings or areas. I think we need to review all of it.
Do we want to vote? Do we want to hold and have an amendment? And I don't know how much more public conversation with the soft opening on Monday. Might be nice just to have it there, but I completely understand if we want to not. We have a motion. We have a motion in a second to act on it.
I put the motion was to have a discussion. I'm sorry.
No, the motion in a second is to act on the Indian tennis courts. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye and I too.
Any of, all opposed? Or? You're abstaining? You can abstain?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let it go upstream.
Then it goes to the superintendent to
I think, okay. Yeah.
I didn't say clarification of the name.
Just kidding.
I, I bet it was.
Time, is that all right?
Why not? I mean, I mean, do you think adding time will get us more input? If, if I don't think that, then I'm fine to vote this way. I just, I don't, do people even know that it's up to be named? I don't think So, again, I come back to, how, how do you want to get it out there? What do you want to do?
Every single email, a newsletter, reach out to Falmouth alumni through whatever means we have to reach out. When we have reunions, obviously, there's a way to reach out to, reach out to people and say, we are soliciting input on naming the tennis courts. If this means anything to you, please reach out to us at this email address or, you know, however we want to be reached.
So it's not on the paper?
No, because this entire community, our, this entire committee reads the newspaper, and I, I understand the effort, but none of us saw, saw that. So it didn't actually reach people and didn't necessarily reach the people who might care, alumni of Falmouth Tennis who might really care about that, don't necessarily read the paper. Our high schoolers who are on the tennis team now, who might really want to see one of the heroes named on that tennis court, don't necessarily read the paper and see that ad. So I think it's got to be a much more proactive process to actually get the message in front of the, the people who might really care about it.
Okay. But I think, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that I think it's important that it not be the, we need to reach out to the tennis community, because this is a tennis topic. I think that the bigger thing is that there needs to be a process for who we reach out to whenever we want to do something like this. Because otherwise, we're going to spin our wheels the next time we want to name something. It should be, like, like Sue said, it should probably go to policy, or at least there should be a procedure developed by the superintendent for how this goes when it comes up. Otherwise, we're just going to be doing it every time.
Okay. Margaret.
And if we actually have next week the opening, I think it's a perfect time to elicit information, let the information be out there, and we're, you know, we're thinking about, you know, the individuals have requested names of the sport, and we're looking for people to provide information in terms of, it may wind up being this person. I have no problem with it.
Sure.
But I think that the whole notion of it, it really needs to be a much more community-involved process. And I do think that the policy committee should have the policy on it, so.
We're happy to.
Great.
Chris.
And kind of to Susan's point too, like, it'd be nice if when we do name something, we have some kind of a plaque or, or something that represents that person, so people can kind of see
Absolutely.
the history of it, like, anything that's named.
And, that being said, I would love to see the memorial plaque and the Marshall Gymnasium plaque replaced. But you see how passionate people are when things are named. Dr. Anthony G. is my superintendent. You know, things like that, you know, whatever. But if we could get those two plaques replaced, because I know that Susan is not the only person who's mentioned it. I've actually, I've heard from community members on that as well. All right, so that will be a future agenda item, sort of going out of order, going for a future agenda.
We're tabling it?
Well, we voted on it, so we can't Well, we voted on it, so we can't very well table it, but we can.
It was a tie.
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Perfect. All right. We're tabling it. Moving on to surplus of books.
Sonia. Um, so on behalf of our social studies department, as they were going, uh, through some materials in one of the classrooms at Lawrence School, um, they requested that we declare this people, uh, surplus. I think initially they were held on to in case there was some reference material that they could use when we made, uh, one complete resource update, uh, for now to remove, uh, the couple revisions to the standards. So they just would like us to put in surplus this.
Thank you. Sorry. I was making notes from previously. Uh, thank you. And you seconded. Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed on the extension? Great. Thank you. Update on the budget.
All right. I hope you, some, uh, bigger copies so you can see the numbers. So the, you have in front of you both, uh, January and February, uh, results, um, and, um, we have some January last meeting. Uh, but, uh, but just to give you a sense of, on the numbers, uh, so if you look at the bottom, the, the January, it's, it's, you know, the, the, it's labeled fiscal year twenty-four results year-to-date through one hundred and fifty-four. You'll see in the second from the right column, the total expenditures of twenty-seven nine nine thirty-seven, um, five hundred and seventy. Uh, available budget, main dirt budget that's available is twenty-eight million, two thirty-eight. Um, so where we are as through January, we're about halfway through, um, the spending, uh, for, of the budget of this year. Uh, and give you a reference point. At the same time, in January of last year, we were about fifty-one percent. So our spending is, is in line with, uh, what it was last year. We're a little bit under on the salary side. It was, uh, we're a little bit higher on the non-salary side. Um, but, uh, that's going to be corrected, you know, as we go through town meeting and, um, question for the stabilization funds and the article for those who will add to the non-salary expenses. So, um, so, you know, in short, um, you know, we're, you know, especially as those two, uh, those two approve, we're, you'll be in good shape for the year. Um, you may just, you know, one, uh, one understanding, one little twist here, um, on salaries. Our salaries, you know, in July and August run a couple hundred thousand every two weeks. Um, and, you know, as the school year begins, they run about a million nine every two weeks. So then, you know, there's a sudden seller acceleration on salary expense, but there's a catch-up. So we're about fifty percent through the budget, even though we're setting like to the budget. It's because that lag of salaries. The, uh, the only, uh, other, uh, mention I want to bring up is in February, we, uh, put a pause on purchasing for, uh, non-salary items. Um, and, uh, and basically if you looked at the, uh, non-salaried total covered and expended line, if you were to go over it by school, really with the exception of, uh, high school, pretty much they were at or close to marginally higher in, uh, February than they were in January. And that's really kind of a reflection of that pause. Uh, the slight increases were really just because of both invoice delays that were paid in February. Um, but high school was a little bit higher and only because of, we were talking about sports earlier. Uh, we paid the break expense, which is sixty-six thousand that, that hits in January, uh, February run. Uh, so, um, that's why we're a little bit higher than the rest of the increases. But all in all, uh, you know, it's, um, you know, we're in good shape, especially as we go into the town meetings.
Any questions or comments for? All right. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Dr. Superintendent, update.
All right. Um, let's see, a few fun things. Uh, my team, when we're out, uh, we read, uh, in the schools, um, especially we always do that. It's so cute to do that. Um, they're lovely. So we get to pick our books and we go in and read them. It's kind of so engaged. Um, uh, also have been trying to go over to the curling club for several years. Our fourth graders, uh, get, it's a, uh, annual trip that they go. They, it's part of their, uh, unit at PE that they learn, but it's much different on a gym floor than it is on the ice. And it's, that's how I got to go over and see one of the schools. Um, it's, um, it was so great to see the kids out on the ice. They were learning the game and, you know, just the feel of being on the ice. Some of our students actually have been involved, uh, at the curling club for a couple of years, I found out. So that's, it's very, it's like that's their kind of sport and, and their path on forward. So it's great to see that engagement and they were teaching the other kids and, and not filling crowds. So that was a lot of fun. Um, our negotiations have started, uh, for the secretaries, uh, food service and custodians, uh, Mary Gans is leading, uh, the effort, um, this year. We, uh, we gave the, um, tennis courts update mostly. Um, Todd did mention that, uh, so it, it's really going to be about the students and coaches. Melissa and I will be there. Um, we'll let the students actually cut the ribbon because it's their, their courts, right? And they're, they'll cut and then they'll have their practice. So just to do something fun for them right, right before. But uh, as Todd mentioned later, uh, in the year, we will have a bigger, more public. Um, there's still just some, some things that have been ordered. They're not in the screens, uh, for the, the fence, the landscaping. Weather hasn't been good since last fall to now that to really be able to do landscaping. And so we'll have it later, um, later. And of course, um, if it comes back to naming, that seems like an appropriate time that we would actually, uh, during that ceremony, that, that could happen. So.
Great.
Um, the ski trip, uh, to New Hampshire was canceled. Uh, I know you voted on that and we all were hoping that would happen, but they didn't have enough students that were interested. So they were unable to take that. Uh, the New York trip was, uh, was changed and you didn't mention that a little earlier on the, the date is now April eighth.
Which is kind of a drag because that is, um, the first Monday of town meeting. Well, and the eclipse. Maybe, maybe the New York trip could be changed again.
They'll have a better view of the eclipse in New York.
That's right.
See it from the.
Uh, our say something, we said that, uh, the K-Paw would be this week. It is, uh, yesterday. Um, we are up and running with our say something, um, anonymous reporting system. Um, this is just a, uh, decaf that can go on that. So there'll be in front of our schools. Um, we'll be putting that, we're, we're hoping, we're asking them to, if they have something that could do as a, um, like a sticker, the kids could have on their laptops or water bottles or whatever, you know, something. So.
Like not just on the front of the building, but like in every bathroom and the locker room.
Posters for that.
Okay.
These are the little sticky that we got, um, that they, they gave us. We didn't have to buy them. There's part of the whole program, which is cool. So we have, um, posters that'll go out everywhere.
Right.
And then like I said, I'm, we're asking them that they'll create, um, just like little sticker, you know, I mean, that, that they can also have. But anyway, I'm excited. It's going, the teachers were all training last week. Students are training this week, but it was up and running as of this day. So it's great. Yeah. Um, and then, uh, we had our, um, parent, uh, writing advisory, um, yesterday. And so we always give an update afterwards. So Sonia, want to give an update about our meeting last night?
Sure. Uh, we met at T-Tickets. We're having one meeting between our elementarys. The last time we met at the T-Ticket library. Um, we had some additional, uh, parents who joined the advisory, um, parents from East who joined, um, Kelsey helped make a connection. Uh, another parent joined us from T-Ticket. Uh, we had some great conversation and, uh, we had planned to work through workshops and communications, start building out our webpage. Uh, but it was really a great opportunity with some new members for us to revisit some of the conversation we had previously. And, um, you know, I think one of the things that keeps coming through is that, you know, with anything, uh, on this scale, uh, we want to be able to introduce some change as we grow. The timeline becomes a little bit fluid and so that became part of the conversation as well. Um, what we want to be able to do with that. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Question about that, just for clarification, how many parents, last night?
Yes, last night.
How many parents came last night?
Last night, I believe we had seven, I'd say.
And that's been more than four that consistently were.
We had the first, the first meeting.
Was more, but it had some different people besides.
Terry? I went to that meeting as an observer, but you know me, I always got over my mouth. So, um, one thing I was happy to see is progress toward the website. That look like, yeah, you're going to get some FAQs and stuff.
Great. Routine business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
All right, great. There's a second. Any discussion on the minute of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four? Being none, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great. Any committee member reports? Kelly?
Um, and now I already forgot if you actually mentioned that, that in negotiations we met with Chris Horn. Yeah. Okay. I do, right. Yes, you were going to. Um, so, uh, part of starting negotiations, um, our first step was to meet with, um, Chris Horn around uh, communication strategies related to, uh, negotiations. And it was super helpful. He's so
Hmm.
Um, and very experienced working, working with other districts, um, and their preparations for, I talk about the different pieces of, of negotiation and having materials that are actually understandable for everyone. And it was just, it was really great. So thank you for setting it up. And, yeah.
Um, I just want to kind of also comment on the negotiations, um, subcommittee that we met with Chris Horn. As somebody who's new to negotiations, this is my, I've never done this before, um, A, it's been great. B, hearing that, um, more and more districts are utilizing a communications expert, that we are not the only district doing this makes me feel like we're kind of on the, in the, in the herd, if you will, but sort of on like the proactive side of the herd. Because although when, uh, we first had the conversation surrounding having Chris Horn Communication Specialist, there was a little, why are we doing this? Um, seeing him in action, I kind of wish we had him for many years before, but I am grateful he is here and I am grateful to hear that other districts are also doing it as well. And the other committee member, Terry.
Um, I want to reiterate what I said about the, um, VIPS, um, fundraising, ex, um, ex, um, work that they're doing. Not one, they haven't gotten hardly anything from the district. That means staff, that means teachers, that means school committee members. And they, that's how they operate is by fundraising. So I'm going to say again, please consider everybody who hears me making a small donation. If it doesn't have five, ten bucks, it's just, we support you. I mean, we get thousands and thousands of, of volunteer, um, hours from the people in this organization. And I mean, you think about, they bring, uh, projects to the students and you have to buy those projects. If you want to have a mentor, it takes a lot of hours to get a mentor because you can't just sign up and say, I want to be a mentor. You have to, you know, go through an interview process that you'll carry out the year. So there's a lot of parts to it. So I'm going to say again, if you're listening and I'm going to go to the new website, um, it's falmouth. org. At the top, there's a button donate. And for the school committee members at the bottom, there's a button that says log your hours. So just to reiterate this next time.
Sorry, if I could just ask a question on God's, to discuss the plans to reinstitute their feast of Falmouth or any of the, um, golf things they did in the past. Those were their fundraising efforts before rather than just the ask.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they do other things. I mean, but it isn't just the ask. They, they do other things to earn money. So, but I'll bring those up to the ready. Okay? Yeah.
Any?
The, uh, they, they met on March, um, fourth, I believe. And I think the, um, I can be brief. Inactivity is the fear zone and the, the whole focus of the committee is to move from performative to transformational. Um, and so that's different. The executive teams are working, everyone's working. There's going to be a speaker in April. Doctor.
It's April second. It's the third series of the belonging, the third, third session of the belonging series. Uh, Dr. Police Wornham will facilitate, uh, and we will have some guests, uh, speakers to share as well. So I think it'll be good.
Great.
If people come.
And the trivia night was fun and my team with its third place.
Any other committee member updates?
Well, so nobody else mentioned it. Steam Fair this weekend. And then of course that.
Yeah.
And girls hockey.
The girl hockey and such.
FDF gala on, did you say that?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear that part. I was stuck on the scene. Like I didn't do, yeah, the FDF gala is, it's right, so thirty-nine.
It's horrible, you know? It's the best thing.
Listen, if I could.
It's a fun weekend.
I don't know the details, but I did see that, uh, we had this last meeting, the senior class is looking for.
Donations. Yes.
I don't know all the information. I just saw.
Yes. So they'll do their, um, their auctions of the steam fair. They'll have the, uh, items that you can bid on there and then they will do the online auction. Um, I think that weekend and the next weekend after. Well, I'll make sure that I get a link out there. If you're not at the theme air for that piece, but at least the online.
Great. Great. Any requests for information? Kelly, um, I'm thinking about, um, how Paul's been doing the updates on like deep dive around different topics that we did, the big ticket items, special, and stuff. And it would be really interesting, um, to do a little bit of deeper information about the, uh, food program and on all those different pieces. Since we've been talking about it with the chef piece, it would be nice to have a little bit of, I have, I've been on eleven years and I've never heard anything. So I would love to know more. Any other requests, Heather?
Yes, similar to that, um, hearing Todd's presentation, um, I, I was hearing the voices of parents, uh, who sometimes said to me, um, we celebrate our athletes so much, which we should. Um, and we don't necessarily do the, the same for our musicians and kids in theater and that kind of stuff. So would love to have some updates from Mr. Snyder from, uh, or from our, um, from Mr. Edwards, right? Music, some of the, the other, uh, great activities that we have going on. And with Todd, we've got the, the different sports seasons and getting updates. It would be great to.
Can I give one now? Oh, do you?
Yeah.
So, um, for the, um, to, to blend both, uh, we're getting permission from MIA that our jazz band can actually be at the garden, um, for our real talking team on Sunday. So we're, that will be part of, yeah, they're going to go off on the, the fan bus and, and they'll be there to, to try and cheer the one. And so it's kind of cool.
Um, and mine is that the physical math teams and championships started by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Can I add to this as well?
Yeah.
Um, there are a handful of students, elementary and middle school students who are performing in Worcester for the All-State Chorus on March twenty-third.
If you really want a great event, one of my favorites of the year, tomorrow night at, uh, seven o'clock at the high school is the all, all band night. So Morris Pond, uh, Lawrence and the high school will be there. It is a great event. Seven o'clock.
North Falmouth tomorrow night, two at seven for their concert. We would have so good a time to.
Kind of make a decision. And the next one is on four on nine?
Yep. Yeah.
That's right. The owner man, that's great. There's just so much good stuff.
I know.
Terry?
There is so much good stuff.
Okay. So this year. Okay, so this year, this June will be the 50th anniversary of Falmouth High School. This will be, June 1974 was the first graduating class of Falmouth High School. So, I really think we have a few months here. Can we, can we play it up? We find some people that have been here? No, no one's been. Won't.
You'll need a plaque.
No, I mean, I, I think we should make a big deal about it because it is the 50th anniversary.
Question about that, tributes.
Yeah, it opened in 73 in September, but the first graduating class was June. Yes, we can do something special to commemorate that.
Maybe we could invite them to graduation. Maybe we could invite them to graduation.
Okay, we reach out to people over there. There are people still alive over there, of course. People are there, we're still alive.
Great. All in favor? That's great. Okay, thanks, everyone.